This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6@SEC, notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Oh, God, I need to get my paper. Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
Flight allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the COW and regular meetings for July 24, 2017?
Everybody was present.
Everybody was here. Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And the city manager's report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City manager's report for August 22 is sanitation will end double pickups by September 1. City will have NEXL, email blast, and post the information on our city website. Two, the two-way conversion of Main Street and State Street is still underway. I am sure that the multiple signboards that the city has purchased making advisories to residents and drivers who come to the city and try to understand the new directed traffic flow and the adjustments that are being made, they should expect delays and detours, but obviously when this is completed, it will be a great improvement for the city. The concert series has come to a close. We are still hosting summer events with our cultural arts center. Some of these events have been rescheduled due to inclement weather. Please check the website for updated information. Already reported, but sanitation truck update. The trucks are being prepped and painted at the vendor. Delivery will be the early midpoint of September. We will have these new trucks finally. It'll be a great thing. Progress has been made with the traffic signal at Beech and Prospect. We will award the bid and have the installation scheduled. The Shade Tree Commission, as repeated, we are looking for residents, I got one today, to apply to the clerk's office for consideration of membership of our Shade Tree Commission. Please see the clerk's office for the proper form. Back-to-school supply drive. We have a box at City Hall Lobby that is collecting school supplies. Local Hackensack churches will be handing out these supplies to children in need for the school year. Before it begins, the drive will end September 15. PD has purchased five new police cars under state contract. New Jersey Transit will be upgrading railroad grade crossings starting September 11 at Main and Terrace, Euclid, Anderson, Atlantic, and Berry. Updates for the next meeting and the information will be nixelled to residents for notification. And that would conclude the city manager's report.
Thank you. Moving on. Resolution 285-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 21-2017, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicapped. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
Need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, boy. Motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Jumping the gun there. Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Now you need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt such ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 21-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 286-17, we'll have a public hearing, but we, at that time, will then table that ordinance to the next meeting, so...
This is for final adoption of ordinance number 22-2017, a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements, buy-in in the City of Hackensack, in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,860,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $1,769,500 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearing.
May I have a motion to open the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public, while we are going to open to the public, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And now you would need a motion to table ordinance 22-2017 for the vote to the September 12, 2017 meeting.
I'll make the offer the motion to table.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, so ordinance 22-2017 for the vote has been tabled to September 12, 2017 meeting.
Resolution 287-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 23-2017, an ordinance authorizing entry of real estate purchase and sale agreement with designated redeveloper PCP Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC for sale of Block 419, Lot 18, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A:12-1@SEC. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion?
Well, if anybody...
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Ain't nobody? Motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the... Oh, I'm sorry, you need to...
Need a motion to adopt.
I'm gonna go faster.
Yeah, me too, I'm way ahead, I'm reading through. Motion to adopt, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 23-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 288-17, we'll have a public hearing, but we'll also be tabled to the next meeting.
Okay, so this is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 24-2017, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing for various improvements to city-owned buildings and appropriating $455,000 and providing that such sums so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance and the capital improvement fund of the general capital fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the city who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, I need a motion to table ordinance 24-2017 to the next meeting, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, this was a motion to table the vote on ordinance 24-2017 to the September 12, 2017 meeting.
Thank you. Resolution 289-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 25-2017, an ordinance fixing and determining municipal class position titles and salary ranges for certain contractual and non-contractual officers and employees of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearings.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. If anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward and give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
Second.
Roll.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Need a motion?
Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 25-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 290-17.
This is an introduction of ordinance number 26-2017, an ordinance to modify a utility easement previously granted to PSENG over a portion of Block 356, Lot 1, which is owned by the City of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 26-2017, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 12, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 291-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance 27-2017, an ordinance adopting Continental Plaza redevelopment plan consisting of Block 512.01, Lot 6, Block 513, Lot 1, and Block 514, Lot 1.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 27-2017, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 12, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 292-17 is being pulled. Now on to Resolution 293-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 29-2017, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Poor Street in the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 29-2017, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 12, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 294-17.
This is a resolution authorizing and directing the planning boards to undertake a non-condemnation preliminary redevelopment investigation to determine whether the delineated area of Block 208, Lot 22, otherwise known as 20-28 Sussex Street, satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. That was 295-17, please?
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. 296-17.
This is a resolution authorizing refunds for the Hackensack Health Department.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 297-17.
This is a resolution authorizing refunds for the Hackensack Recreation Department.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 298-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to convert the below charges to property needs.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 299-17.
This is a resolution for the authorization to establish a reserve for preliminary expenses for the Main Street Streetscape Project.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 300-17.
Say, "Resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation, NJSA 40A:4-87, for the 2017 Clean Communities Grants."
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 301-17.
This is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $46,136.32 to Jesse D. Moore, this is DPW.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 302-17.
Say, "Resolution qualifying professional service providers and authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with such qualified professionals."
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 303-17.
Say, "Resolution awarding state contract for purchase of five 2018 Ford Police Interceptors for the Police Department."
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 304-17.
Say, "Resolution concurring with the planning board's investigation and designating Block 512.01, Lot 6, Block 513, Lot 1, and Block 514, Lot 1, as an area in need of rehabilitation."
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 305-17.
Say, "Resolution authorizing Murphy Orlando LLC to represent the City of Hackensack in anticipated litigation."
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Aye. Payment of bills, Resolution 306-17.
Resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. Anybody have any issues with the consent agenda, any conflicts, anything that needs to be polled?
No. Not for me. Dave?
No. I see none here. What's that? Yeah. No. So what are you, in a paper? Hmm? And we can't vote on it.
Thank you, office.
Well, if you have a quorum for a resolution, I believe you can still, if you have a quorum and a majority, the quorum should still be acceptable for a resolution. I think if it's two to zero, and three people appear...
Okay. Fine. Yeah, it is...
I'll double-check it, but if there's an issue, we'll put it back on. I'll just make a final decision on that, but you should be fine for an ordinary resolution.
I thought you maybe ought to pull it because I'm... I'm just gonna abstain. I'm not gonna vote on it. Okay.
You're gonna vote...
We're gonna pull, not gonna pull, we're gonna vote on Resolution 321-17. Resolution 321-17 is... We're gonna vote on Resolution 321-17. Resolution 321-17 is... We're gonna vote on Resolution 321-17. 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 We're gonna vote on Housing Authority to fill an unexpired term to, and I apologize if I pronounce the name wrong, Sarquice Pico. Resolution 310-17 is a resolution authorizing the Board and Commission appointments for the Recreation Board. Resolution 311-17 is a resolution authorizing a bingo license. Resolution 312-17 is a resolution authorizing renewal of liquor license for Solari's Restaurant, Inc. Resolution 313-17 is a resolution authorizing renewal of a liquor license for American Multicinema, Inc. Resolution 314-17 is a resolution authorizing appointment of an alternate to the planning board for a one-year term. Resolution 315-17 is a resolution authorizing release of escrow for 315 West Pleasant View Avenue. Resolution 316-17 is a resolution authorizing release of escrow for 249 South River Street. Resolution 317-17 is a resolution authorizing release of escrow for 52 Hackensack Avenue. Resolution 318-17 is a resolution authorizing award of bid for emergency storm and sanitary sewer repairs for J. Fletcher Kramer &amp; Son. Resolution 319-17 is a resolution authorizing award of bid for traffic signal and road improvements at Beech Street and Prospect Avenue for Allen Brightweight Electric, Inc. And Resolution 320-17 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the County of Bergen for an adaptive traffic signal system, and we need a motion for those. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, and then...
Need Resolution 321-17 read, please?
This is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Hackensack Meridian Health for building naming rights at the Hackensack Performing Arts Center.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
I recuse myself.
Okay. And that's it. I'm done.
Wasn't too painful.
Okay. Can I go home now?
Okay, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward. You have five minutes. Give your name and address to the clerk, please.
Greetings, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Ryan Roy. You've probably seen me a few times around here.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Ryan. Ryan Roy, 167 Northwest Singh Avenue, South of New Jersey, 0766 Street. I just wanna, you know, let you know, you guys, you know...
We used to walk through the...
No, sorry. I just wanna let you know that you guys really did a good job, you know, with the fireworks display last month, and also with the movie Under the Stars, and the summer concert series as well, especially with Matt Whitaker being honored as the hometown hero and, you know, humanitarian recipient for all the things he has done, especially for, he was actually visually impaired, and the talents that he actually has displayed. And I actually, I know that, I actually am an autism advocate. I represent people with disabilities, especially within the autism spectrum disorder in Bergen County and beyond the Garden State. I know you actually approved the Access for All Committee to, you know, to have it be passed as an ordinance, and I was hoping if I can actually help start it, to really, you know, include, you know, Councilwoman Von Rudenberg, or even one of the councilmen to really start it off, and especially some of the residents in Hackensack, you know, oversee it, and, you know, whatever, and everything else, because, you know, I just thought that, you know, I would really wanna make a difference, especially that I, you know, worked as a, you know, facilitator for Bergen Regional Advocacy Network, that's through People First, under the New Jersey Council on Development of Disabilities. I usually have the first meeting every first Thursday at the Height and the Pans of Progress, you know, in Main Street, in Suite 120, Hackensack, New Jersey, so, you know, I'll actually give my contact business cards, you know, at the end of the meeting, and hopefully you can contact me, and, you know, we'll stay in touch.
Thank you. Mr. Roy, if you could give your cards to City Manager, that would be great, if you have some.
Yes, because definitely Councilwoman Von Rudenberg, who definitely wants to get, she's on vacation this week, but when she gets back, she'll reach out to you, and we have, we did, we passed this, and we have to move a little bit on this now. You're absolutely right. So, we appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Good evening, Larry Eisen, Maple Hill Drive.
Sir?
You guys look so lonely up there.
Yeah. It's like the Skeleton Crew.
I would like to compliment...
Your timing off a little, Tim.
I would like to compliment the Cultural Arts Department for the programs in the Atlantic Street Park this summer. They were wide and breadth, offered something to every sub-community in the city. The quality was excellent. It was wonderful to see so many people coming down to the park for these performances, whether it was Shakespeare, or it was a concert, it just was a terrific, terrific evening. I fortunately was able to attend all of it, and to see all the different communities in Hackensack join together and having an enjoyable evening together was really thrilling, and Greg did a fabulous job, and I thank the City Council for supporting these efforts.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Next, please.
Rich Servo, 46 Spring Valley Avenue. You know, I just, I got several things to say, so let's talk quick. I'm gonna talk fast. I don't see, I don't see, I don't see anything, quickly, yes. Thank you. I don't see anything on Mercer Street unless, you know, they're hiding their work there. I don't see any activity on Main and Mercer yet, and the weeds are as high as a cornfield. Maybe we should make it a corn... and the weeds are as high as a cornfield. Maybe we should make it a cornfield, okay? Just think of that. We could grow corn on Main and Mercer. Wow. Fill it in. Be a beautiful, beautiful scene. It would. So, think about that, okay? Also, I was shocked, absolutely shocked, when I read about what you spent on that May election. Oh, my God. You spent $275,000 to get reelected? And the other ambitious ticket spent 200 grand almost. We didn't spend near $12,000. So, I really don't feel that bad now. We could actually win. I mean, you spent that much money, John? That, please, I mean, let us know. Did you give money out in envelopes for votes? I mean, tell the truth. That's a lot of money, John, and I am shocked, okay? All right, also, let's talk about jobs, okay? Because there are none. You're not creating any. And, you know, a job saves us from boredom, vice, okay, and need. It's a special thing to have, is a job. Everyone needs a job, okay? And there's dignity in digging a ditch, just as if you'd be writing a poem. So, there's dignity in work, any kind of it. So, I encourage you to get that going. Think about creating some jobs. Bring in some light manufacturing. I don't know. You're the mayor, okay? And someone you spoke so well of in the past, Mayor Fulop in Jersey City, was one of your idols not long ago because of the giveaways he was giving away in Jersey City. Now has turned around and said that he is going to guarantee locals 50, I think it's 50% of the jobs on work sites in Jersey City. Now, we asked you to do that. We asked you, John, can't you guarantee jobs to locals? And I think you ignored us, or you said, "Oh, I don't have anything to do with that," or something of that sort. Like, that wasn't your, you know, that wasn't something for you to do or get involved in. And so, but I really encourage you to follow along with someone you praised not too long ago, Mayor Fulop in Jersey City, and now he wants to create local jobs. So, that's really, that's really about it. The Mercer Street, I don't see anything there. Make it a cornfield, John. I don't care, okay? Jobs, we need jobs, and you spent so much money on that election. I am appalled. I, there should be limits on what you could spend. That's absolutely incredible. That was, I read that a couple of weeks ago in The Chronicle, and good luck to you, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Gal Wells, 160 Overlook Avenue. Mayor and Council, my first time in a meeting like this, so this ordinance 292-117 that was pulled. You know, obviously noise has been an issue for me, a ten-and-a-half-month ongoing investigation, and due to appear in municipal court tomorrow as a result of a noise complaint that I've been dealing with. Something that the attorney said about how noise will be monitored, and I'm sorry, he didn't say, he didn't say it, I'm sorry. What he said was, "Resources that don't need to be spent." When it comes to noise, noise is something that goes up, it goes down, and it varies depending upon many, many other factors besides the actual noise that's being made. So, when you're playing music, especially when you take 170 Prospect with a cafe and an outdoor dining area, you know, I don't live at the Eiffel Tower, and I feel like I'm the voice for them. You know, I live at the Devonshire. But for those people, and maybe they won't have an issue, you know, maybe it's, like you said, it'll, you know, be soft music. Nobody will hear it. It's, you know, within 25 feet. You know, it would be nice if noise could stop like, you know, cutting somebody's grass, and, you know, you can stop that hedge. But I just need to ask you to have very careful consideration about allowing outdoor music, especially on Prospect. It is a residential neighborhood. Yes, there is a restaurant. There's been a restaurant there for almost 20 years. But it is a residential neighborhood, and that noise will travel. You can't stop noise from traveling. And it would be nice if they could just, you know, if people would do the right thing and honor codes and laws and ordinances and all of that, but they don't, and they're in place, and we create them, we as a body create them because people continue to break them. So, you know, again, I don't know what this whole ordinance says, and maybe it has to be formulated.
Well, go ahead and finish it and speak to it.
So, I would like to, I would like to know, but I have certainly done my fair share of studying noise and ordinances, and...
The discussion on that, why that's being carried for, to be tuned up, is more about construction on Sundays. We don't want contractors doing work, but say a homeowner wants to repair some boards on his deck on a Sunday. In my opinion, she should certainly be allowed to do that because he's totally winning his rights to use a chainsaw to cut down a tree, which is 10 times as noisy. So, I said, "We have to come up with a definition for light construction by a homeowner at his home on Sunday, as long as it doesn't become a nuisance."
Okay.
Not that, I don't want the guy building additions only on Sundays, but if the guy's working six days a week and he wants to do a couple of repairs on his house on a Sunday, that shouldn't be a big deal. That's why that was...
Okay, okay, perfect. With that being said, you know, and somebody said in the audience, you know, "Well, what if you're having a party?" Or maybe they said up there, I'm a little, you know, I'm not sure. "What if somebody's having a party?" Well, you know, if your neighbor's having a graduation party or a birthday party, whatever, you know, it's not seven days a week. It's not, you know, for 11 hours a day. So, again, any kind of outdoor, you know, noise, any kind of outdoor consistent, ongoing noise has to be given careful consideration, and we know how hard it is to enforce. I've had the constable at my apartment. I've had him outside. I've had a lot of people on the noise issue that, you know, Devonshire is dealing with. So, I just would like for you to, you know, consider this when moving forward with any kind of music that you're considering.
We will watch it closely, and the ball's gonna be in their court, because if there's complaints, it's gonna stop. That's what the nuisance laws...
Okay.
And I might add, the noise ordinance, when we adopt it, will provide us with additional tools to be able to manage that. We will have a certified person with a noise meter, so if it's above the limits, you know, she'll be able to come out and say, "Hey, look, you know, this is too loud."
But you can turn volume up. You can turn volume down, you know, it's, again, it would be nice if everybody could just follow the rules and be respectful of their neighbors. We live in a very densely populated area. And with that being said, you know, there are those that don't wanna follow the rules, and, you know, unfortunately, we know the tragedy that happened on the corner of Linden and Passaic. So, you know, again, I just would ask for your support in, you know, making sure that everybody knows...
It will be monitored. If it becomes a nuisance and we get complaints, it will be addressed, and it will stop.
Thanks.
That's why I say the ball's in their court. If they wanna drop it, it's up to them.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Carolyn Davis, Stanley Place.
Amy Davis.
Hi, everybody.
How are you?
How's your summer been going?
Very good. Yours?
Fine. I wanna say congratulations also to the, to the cultural arts, to Greg Leosie, but especially I wanna say thank you also to Randy Glover. I think Randy was the one who came up with the ideas to have the different cultural nights, and I wanna thank the city for working with him on that, but I had to mention his name for doing those programs. We got them all in except Motown night, so I hope we can have a time...
It's coming up.
For good weather, good weather. Another time for Motown night. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you can answer them or not. We're told to put out leaves in paper bags. One of the problems I'm finding with that is, if it rains, the paper bags get wet, and you have a mess. So, I don't know why you want the paper bags, but this is a problem I've had. I've collected leaves, put them in paper bags. It's a while before they collect them, you know, maybe I collect them a week before it's supposed to be collected. It rains, and next thing you know, you have a silky wet bag and mess all over the place. So, I don't know if that can be looked into. Again, that's my problem with the paper bags. My next question is, are there gonna be parking meters on Main Street? Because my question for saying that is, in all this redevelopment, and we have, none of us are against redevelopment on the Main Street, I find it's going to be an issue. If you have parking meters on Main Street, no matter what you put down on Main Street, if I can still go out to the Plaza or anywhere else and park for free, that's gonna be deterrent, in my opinion, of attracting people to Main Street. So, I just wanted to bring that up to you. If you're going to attract people, some, you have to find another way to make the money, because if I can go out to the mall and visit all the stores and eat and go to the movies and not put a dime in a meter, and my choice is that, or go to Hackensack to Main Street, I'm gonna choose the Plaza where the mall still works free. So, as you're doing your redevelopment, that's something to think about. I agree with the, it's been brought up before about jobs. As we're attracting millennials, we have millennials right here in town who have to move out of town because jobs, cost of living, so forth and so on. I don't, again, don't understand why we cannot work with these developers and put enough pressure on them, that you're making a lot of money in our community, and set up something where we can have young people internship, whatever, some way that they can give back to the young people in our town. You can't make them. Nobody can make anybody do anything, but you're saying, "Welcome to our town," but this is, this is a proposition. This is something that we would expect from you to help our community. I also brought up one time about the sewer backup, and I wasn't at the meeting when I heard that it was said it wasn't a priority, that the Main Street redevelopment was a priority. Well, I tend to disagree on that, because, again, the more you develop, the more we back up. For the citizens who live in that community, and we're paying taxes, we constantly have, and unfortunate, I don't know why it happens on Stanley Place like that. I guess it's just the way the road, the street goes down. But the last, a couple of months ago when we had that flooding, it's amazing the amount of water. When I say you could have rowed a rowboat down Stanley Place, and to say to those citizens it's not a priority is not right, because every time, it's their property being damaged, their cars, my daughter's car was totaled because of the rain. So, I think it is a priority, and the more development you do in a city, that the pipes and everything are underdeveloped, the more issues we, that live in that area, gets water, will have. So, to us, it is a priority. Another question. I'm gonna get everything in in my five minutes. What is the progress, and I wasn't here for the Cal meeting, in the new location for the rec center? The last...
Say it again, the beginning of the question? I'm sorry, missed the beginning.
Progress.
Where are we putting it?
Looking for a replacement for the rec center. If there's any progress. I missed the Cal meeting, so I don't know what's going on with that. The last we know is that, before the summer started, was that you were gonna look for alternate locations for that. And I believe that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want me to answer those real quick, I'll answer them real quick. All right. Jobs, we have spoken with the developers when we sit with them and ask, and like you said, we can't make them, but we do ask. There's no way for me to monitor who from Hackensack is working on any construction jobs. I don't know. But I will, I will start looking into, to that a little more. The trash bags, this is a pilot program we're trying to do. I agree, sometimes the bags, they get wet, they break. The trick is to not overload them, because I've overloaded them, and you pick them up, and the bottom comes out. But the reason we're doing the bags is, ties right into one of your issues down at Stanley Place, is you put the leaves on the street, heavy rain comes, goes in the sewer, clogs the sewers.
I'm sorry, I don't mean in the street. I, in the past, have used just plastic bags.
You should never, never put leaves in plastic bags, because the leaves before this year were to be put on the street to be picked up, and what's happening is, throughout the city, that's how they're done. You'll see these giant piles of leaves in the fall, the water, when a heavy rain comes, they get washed into the sewer, and it creates havoc in the sewers. So, the DEP has asked all municipalities to ask local residents and communities to try and bag leaves. Now, we're doing a pilot program. It's not mandatory. You can still put leaves on the street, but we're gonna really focus on getting the people to try to bag their leaves, is just, where it just becomes a practice. I'm gonna try it at my house this year as best I can, because I've always, you know, I get a lot of leaves where I am, and I'm gonna have a lot of bags, but, you know...
But that's what I've been doing. Like I said, my, I don't overload them. It just, if they get wet, you can have a half a bag, but if it gets wet...
Yeah, it becomes, it becomes a problem, and you can't leave them out until, you can't put them out until pickup day. That's the problem. So, it's, when the moving of them is where the problem is created. So, I don't disagree with that part, but it's very important that we try to get the leaves off the street, because it's really killing our sewers. We're finding out through the photographs and stuff of the sewers, when they're down there with the cameras, there's a lot of leaves and debris down there from, you know, from yard waste and just, that's killing us, and it's not helping our situation with the flooding. Parking, yeah, we're, there's gonna be, we've had this discussion a million times, but we will be charging for parking, and the parking will be more than it is now. You know, I go to a restaurant in Ridgewood. There's parking meters all over Ridgewood on Main Street. I have no problem paying to park to go for a meal for two hours. It would cost me a dollar or two. I don't have an issue with that. The meters are gonna be set up that if you have to run in and out for 15 minutes, it's only gonna cost you a quarter, all right? But they are gonna go up. There's gonna take credit cards. It's gonna be a special kind of meter. But all municipalities today with large, redeveloped downtowns have a parking authority or parking utility and have parking meters. And I'm not talking about TNEC, because TNEC's always, it's, you know, there's nobody...
I'm not saying that they don't have it. I'm saying that, being that we are so close to the malls. All I have to do is drive up Spring Valley Avenue, and I'm right there. If I have to make the choice, me personally, even if it's only a dollar, I'm gonna go to the mall without having to pay anything. So, I just think it's a downside to advertising. There aren't many people who pay. They won't mind.
Do you realize that there's free parking in Hackensack now, in areas, right? But it involves walking a block, but somebody will go to the Plaza and park free and walk three blocks, basically, without even realizing it. So, and the trend is showing. People, people wanna live in a downtown area. They wanna come to a downtown area, hang out in a downtown area. You go to Hoboken, you pay for parking. Go to Jersey City, pay for parking. Ridgewood's parking. Westwood, I think, pays, you pay for parking. So, I mean, and that's the least worried. The biggest trouble we have with parking on Main Street right now is, you know what the problem is? It's too cheap. If I work in a store on Main Street and I can park all day for $2, guess where I'm gonna park? Right in front of where I work. And that's what the employees are doing. If you go down Main Street, you, half the people on Main Street work on Main Street. They park right in front. That leaves no room for, for people to... To shop. So, but if you're charging somebody $8 a day to park, they're not gonna park in front of their building. They're, they're placing business where they work. They're gonna park in one of the lots where they should be parking, so... But no, the parking, there will be a charge for parking. And the other issue, flooding. I think there might have been a little miscommunication there, because when I said priority, they were talking about changing a whole scheme of a plan, all right, which involved what was eventually going to create funding to fix exactly what you're talking about. So, I had made the comment, you put the cart before the horse, basically. We need to get the infrastructure done, to get certain areas done, so we can start bringing in revenue to pay for all this infrastructure work that we need to get done. And otherwise, it's gonna put the Main Street redevelopment off by two or three years at least. The window could close on that. We could be in big trouble then. But there's been progress on, down by your area. I know the engineers have met about doing some work on Stanley Place and increasing the size of the pipes, so that wasn't put aside. They're actually working on it.
Just for the record, I, normally you're at every meeting, so I don't know how you missed this. The Cal meetings are now recorded, so you'll be able to see what has transpired. The city of Hackensack, this mayor and council has made this absolutely a priority. So, the first thing that we've done is, we had one of our engineering films start to go back and look at this. There was a study done in 2003, I believe it was 2003. So, the first thought process for me was, let's identify the streets and make sure that those streets are cleaned, the pipes, to make sure that we, because we either have a drainage issue or we have a flooding issue. And they're a little different. I, some of them are gonna say it's the same results, but not the action taken, in my opinion, to address that. So, once we have all these pipes cleaned, now we're gonna obviously have our own little scientific study. We're gonna let it rain and see where we're at. Based on that opinion, we have already had the study done from 2003. We're gonna take action in the affected area of Clay, Stanley, and all of those streets that are down in that, that basically traps that water. But I have to tell you, we had two priorities. We had sewer separation, and we had the repair of infrastructure. This council is leaning towards, we're gonna address the immediate problem, because that immediate problem is flooding and how it affects residents. So, I have to be honest with you. I don't know where that conversation came up, that this isn't a priority, because I get my direction from these folks. They basically tell, say, "City manager, we want you to address these problems." After they say that, it's my job to start addressing them. All I can say is that I haven't been here very long, but I hope to establish at least a reputation that if you give me something to do, I'm not sitting on it. I go after it.
I know, I know that. I know.
So, the engineering firm has already been retained, we're gonna clean these pipes first, and whatever the results of that is gonna guide us. Obviously, our CFO sits in the audience, and I see him go, don't make any guarantees, because, uh, obviously we have to fund these also, but this is why we need to make this a priority.
Ted, I know you always follow through, and I thank you for that. But like I said, I, I heard through the grapevine, because I was at that meeting...
Right.
That it was not considered a priority.
From now on, all those are... So now you can just watch it, I'm, I'm...
I think there was, because there was, somebody mentioned up here, stopping the sewer separation, that we were, project we're working on, which is federally and state funded besides. We have grant money for that, so we could possibly lose that money, which would be crazy, to, to do something else. And I said, you can't just stop in the middle of something and change, change directions.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification.
Probably what that discussion was about.
I'm happy about that.
Well, we can do two things at once.
Um, and my last thing was about the M&amp;M, the, the, the...
M&amp;M building, we gave a Fran Ryan...
There's a complete presentation that's on that recording, you go home and watch it on the Cal meeting, you'll see the whole thing.
There's been no decision made as of yet, but we did get information pertaining to the buildings, where it is now, or where it would go now, originally where it was planned, I'm sorry, and possibly in Johnson Park, it gives us some, some stuff to weigh.
I've been waiting all summer.
All right?
Did you hear the part that the two new sanitation trucks have arrived and... Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Next, please. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Those are the last meetings, so that's why I'm catching up on some of these things. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Karen.
Oh, is my five minutes up?
Yes, ma'am. You've got like seven, you kidding me?
Anne Stern, 151 Prospect Avenue. I'm back. Okay, the first thing is resolution, resolution 319, 319. Uh, Prospect and Beach.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's my neighborhood. What are you planning on doing there, putting up a...
Putting a light.
Why?
It's a four-way, because we've had so many accidents with the four-way stop, uh, traffic studies were done, and we showed that we need a light there. That is the most dangerous intersection in the city of Hackensack, officially.
Years ago, they planned on putting a traffic light there. And they decided not to do it...
And not putting a blinking light there. This is a traffic, a stoplight.
They decided not to do it because the length of the street between Prospect and Summit was too short to allow for the lineup of cars that would happen when there was a red light there. So they didn't do anything with it. Now, the idea of putting a traffic light there, a stoplight, I don't think that's gonna solve it. A blinking light might work better, if you're gonna insist on putting a light there. I don't think that's a particularly good idea.
Well, there were traffic studies done, that and along with the fact that we've had so many accidents, we had to move forward. We've had horrific accidents there, Prospect Avenue is, I've seen, personally, I have seen four accidents myself there. I've seen people run, that is the most run-through stop sign I've ever seen in my life, where people on Prospect just, don't even, they just go right through it.
But the traffic coming down on Prospect Avenue during morning hour rush hour has gotta be three, three blocks long.
With the new traffic, and I actually have my engineer sitting in the back, but the, the signalization process today compared to how it was years and years ago, with digital timing and everything else, controls the flow of traffic much differently than three minutes on, three minutes off, three minutes on, it can regulate it. There's no cars that they can determine all the types of different, I, I can even bring him up to speak to it if you'd like, but, uh...
Plus, there's a much better flow of traffic than a four-way stop. It's a four-way stop, everyone's stopping each time, think about it. When you have a green light...
I've been doing it for over 30 years.
But you have a continuous flow, so it's, it's a much smoother flow of traffic than what we have now, which is a four-way, or which is a blinking light where you're gonna be stopping at each time.
They had better coordinate the light with the light on Summit, because that's gonna make a big difference. All right, now, Essex Street flooding. I'm reasonably sure that's still Hack, that's still Hackensack where it floods. Do we have to raise the sidewalk or clean out the pipes?
It wasn't a matter of the pipes, ma'am, that's a prob, a problem that's existed for a while, that we're a title city, right? You're talking about last week's storm, for instance?
Yeah.
You had, you had a high tide come in through a major storm with water coming in from the north, water coming north, water coming south on a title city. I've seen, I've seen sewer covers blown off when it's not even raining because of the tide coming up down that area, but...
What do we do about it?
It's a problem.
We can't control that.
It's very, very hard to control.
Raise the street?
It's like if you lived on an oceanfront and a storm came through and you had a storm surge, water goes over, that's the problem when you live by a river. It's almost impossible to fix that, it really is.
Towns around us, and I'm not too sure how we rate, they don't believe in street signs. You can go driving in some of the towns around here, and there are no street signs that tell you what street you're at. We have a lot of street signs that are missing, and don't ask me specifically, because I didn't write it down, but somebody's got around, and I think the cops could do this very, very well, notice when there's a street sign missing.
Great idea, I like it.
Okay.
He's gonna be on it.
Okay. The next thing is left turns. Left turns are illegal from what I understand?
No, depending on where it is. Left turns where, I mean?
I thought in general, a left turn was illegal.
I'm sorry?
If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, because otherwise...
No, left turns are only illegal if it's stated so, uh, by a, by a regulated sign that had an ordinance passed to put it there.
So if I go down, uh, Prospect Avenue and have to make a left turn into my driveway across a double yellow line...
Can do that.
I'm allowed?
Yes.
I'm good?
Absolutely. Next, please.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, Lode Street, Hackensack. Um, a couple of things, we shorned our two times a week garbage collection, it should have started in May, it started in June, and now it's ending September 1st. It was supposed to be from May to October, because that's what all the other towns do when they do twice a week. But we, we got gypped one month this way and one month that way. And last year, we had the water park extended a month when it was really hot, and it's this, and if it is hot, and we haven't garbage collection once. The reason the leaves didn't work, because it wasn't well coordinated. It worked for hundreds of years in Hackensack, it just didn't work the last three years because the person in charge didn't follow through. We had a designated leaf schedule, it told the people when to put them at the curb, and they were supposed to be picked up that day. So that's what everybody did, they followed it, it was on, it was, it was on the calendar that people looked at for the leaves. They don't look at for the recite, for the rubbish, but they looked at it for the leaves. And at that time, we will put them on the thing and it was picked up. The only reason, they clog the drains and everything else, is because the person who was supposed to follow the sign didn't, and the schedule didn't. So if the, if it would be well coordinated with the people who are supposed to pick up and the people who are supposed to put them on the curb, the, the, uh, process worked a, a lot of times and it does work. To ask us to bag the leaves, I mean, we don't get anything for a tax dollar, and this, this is kinda sad. And finally, the new garbage trucks are coming, amen to that. Um, infrastructure, the, the bottom line, I think what most people were saying here, Carolyn and everybody else that talked about the infrastructure, is that we have an existing problem now. And to say we're gonna add 2,000 more residents, it's not gonna help the problem. And it's kinda silly to say we're gonna wait for their money to help us fix it, because then we're gonna need better infrastructure, because you're adding more people. So if the infrastructure presently cannot accommodate what we have, how could you expect it to, the influx, or addition to all these extra people, it's gonna, it's gonna be worse. We had a really bad flooding situation, like our mayor said, because of the tide and the situation, and we were on the news, I mean, we flooded like all over the place. Um, I helped one of my friends on Jackson Avenue, she wanted to thank Chris from the sewer department, because he did come in and clean, she had sewer backup. And like Carolyn, anybody has sewer backup, that, that's disgusting, I mean, it's really horrible to have that. So we need to, you know, to separate these sewers, and we need to, to do something. But it seems to, this, this, everything is in need of redevelopment, we keep adding things, we keep adding rehabilitation, redevelopment, and we're not fixing what we have. We're losing a lot of, I think when people say jobs, they don't mean jobs for the immediate, um, construction of what's happening, they mean like light industry, to put like factories or companies. And a lot of our companies are leaving because we raised the taxes on all these commercial buildings, and they're going to, they're going to South Hackensack, or Saddle Brook, or someplace else. I, I see a lot of them leaving, the Hobart area and all those other areas, because they can't afford to stay here, we, we're killing them with taxes. And as far as that AS or ASS, whatever their company calls them, the appraisal company, I called, and they said that the reason they're coming back is because they wanna see if anybody did a kitchen. Well, that's kinda petty, when we're giving all these big tax write-offs to all these, these pilot programs, and they wanna come back into somebody's house who lives there to see if they worked on the kitchen so they could raise their tax. As Mr. Serbo said, he didn't do anything to his house and he got raised. So they're gonna penalize us, because you're looking for money and you're, and you're penalizing the people who've been paying taxes all these years or on fixed income? I think we have to do something better with that. Um, the other thing is, what are we doing about the schools? You raised your flag, you're white cloth there, Mr. Sims, that we're gonna talk, we need a school, is any, is anything happening with the Board of Ed? Are we doing any kind of progress, seeing what we have to do with the schools? I mean, it's something that...
Yeah, wait, she'll, she'll answer what she's...
All right, I mean, I don't, um, as a taxpayer and as a parent and, and for education, I know we need, I need, we need a elementary, uh, what do you call that preschool thing that we're paying way too much to St. Francis for? And, um, it's not happening, so we need to do something there. Uh, then, we have a nuisance law and we have a noise law. The noise law gets, gets needed with a monitor, and you have to have somebody that knows how to read that, and that's different. We in Hackensack, I don't know if that young lady left or not, it's called a nuisance law, that if I can hear from my house and you're playing your house, that's a nuisance, and they can be ticketed for it or told to stop. So that's a difference. But the other thing is, if you're gonna have residential properties on top on your Main Street to redevelopment, and you're gonna have noise downstairs, you have to be considerate of people who go to work the next day. I mean, you can't, people get carried away, the woman was right, when they play music, so nobody's gonna stand there and, and keep bothering our police force to come down and tell them to, to lower the music. And we heard this from Paul in Kentucky area for hundreds of years about living next to the Culture Arts Center with the music. I mean, that's something that, that you can't control. There is a nuisance law that says that if we hear it, it's too, it's too loud. Um, is that my time limit?
That's it, ma'am, thank you.
So I need an answer to the school, because I'm worried about that.
We will, we will address it.
Okay, that was my time.
Maybe you just have to add before...
Let the, let this next woman go and then we'll answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Next one.
Good evening, Margot Cooper, 241 Stanley Place.
How are you this evening, ma'am?
Fine, thank you.
Good.
Thank you. The homeowners and residents of Hackensack would like some facts clarified regarding the sanitation trucks. Should I address the questions to the council or directly to the manager?
I would say to the city manager in this case.
Okay. The town stated it would purchase six new trucks, I emphasize the word new trucks. The first two allegedly were supposed to arrive the spring of 2017, this year. Two new trucks, actually, have we received any new trucks?
The, I don't know if you were here prior, ma'am...
Prior to what?
Well, I, I don't know what time you joined this meeting, but I've announced now twice, this will be the third time, that the two trucks that we have already ordered and contracted for are now being fitted with a body and they're painted, and we'll have them midweek September.
Okay, September...
And then in the, the January, when we put the 2018 budget together, we will then again order two more trucks. Because if you buy six trucks in one year, you're gonna have to replace six trucks in one year. That's not a smart move. Also, financially, there's only so much money that fits into the operating budget of the city, because we can only increase the budget by 2%. So the guarantee of purchasing six trucks will happen. It's just not gonna happen in one day and then one night.
But it was stated that effective spring of this year, allegedly, we were supposed to get the trucks. Now you're telling me mid-September, that, that makes sense.
I think, maybe, the mix-up is they had to be ordered in the time it takes to build the truck.
These trucks are built for us, it's, it's not like I go down to the local Ford dealership...
Well, we were advised of that fact, that the trucks had to be built.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we discussed this at council quite some time ago, and we were given this information. How long did it take to build a truck, approximately?
I don't have the, the agreements in front of me, but normally, these trucks are between 90 and 120 days, just for the, for the construction of the truck, and then they have to go to the, because the bodies are built by a different manufacturer than the person that builds the truck and the chassis. I was not the city manager when this issue came up in the time.
Very true, very true.
I, I got to the dance a little late. So I had that, that was a BT moment, I refer to that as before Ted, but all I can tell you is, since Ted's been on board, we are addressing these issues as fast as we can. But I, you can hold me to this, and it's recorded, we will be purchasing six trucks. I will order the next trucks as fast as I can for the 2018, and we're gonna replace two trucks, two trucks, two trucks.
I got, I got all that, but I don't wanna lose my fine five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I understand your explanation perfectly.
I will give you an extra minute for his interference.
Okay, very good.
Sorry, ma'am, I apologize for speaking.
No, no, I want you to speak, because if you don't speak, we don't learn, and there is miscommunication, and we've had too much of that in town, and we wanna get past that.
Understood.
Okay, now, were there some additional trucks, uh, brought on board recently, say within the last several months, so forth, which were leased or are being leased before we get these two brand-new trucks in September mid?
Ms. Cooper, do you want him to answer now, or do you wanna continue to your time? I'll add a minute, you can finish up, and then he'll answer.
Whichever way, I just wanna know...
Why don't you, why don't you continue on?
Oh, okay.
He'll answer the questions. We're gonna add a minute when that buzzer goes off.
Okay.
And then he'll answer.
Okay. So I can...
You keep going.
Continue verbally, okay? Now, um, if we have, do we have additional trucks come in, as I just stated a few moments ago, which are adding to the budget of the sanitation workers? Or are these the trucks we've always had with no additional expense? You understand my question? Oh, okay, now you can speak, I think that's my time, right?
Well, the mayor said you got an extra minute, so...
You have an extra minute if you've got anything else.
I don't want, I, I don't wanna get paddled for speaking out of turn.
Okay, you may answer.
Okay. We have two trucks that are leased. One of those trucks became, um, frail. So they, leasing company has replaced it, so now that's why we have a red sanitation truck running around, everybody goes, 'cause I even went, what the heck is that? So, those trucks are leased, I can't turn those leased vehicles back in until I get these two new trucks. But the city is gonna move away from leasing vehicles for this purpose.
Very good.
Yeah, because it's not cost-effective, and in long-term, it's not a prudent move.
How much is being charged per month, per truck?
I don't have that answer in front of me.
Is it available?
If you turn, that gentleman's going to give you that answer, because he's a CFO.
That's what I had heard. So that means $10,000 for two trucks. But once you get the brand...
$5,000.
For the two?
$2,500 apiece, $5,000 total.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So 12 months would be $60,000.
But once you get the new truck, that contract is null and void or no?
Yes, we're going to, as I stated before, I can't send those two trucks back until I have these two trucks in place. And then, based on that, and hopefully the condition of our current fleet, we will immediately order the next two trucks and get them in here.
Good. In the sequence of two trucks?
I'm going to order these.
And two, total six.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's what we heard. That's what I'm double-checking on.
No problem.
Mid-September? Okay. I'll look for the trucks.
No problem.
Lovely. Thank you.
That's what they, that was the most recent that we got, that the trucks are being painted, and they're mounting the bodies, and we should have these trucks mid-week September.
Wonderful. Very good. I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Oh, yeah, we could, but we...
We'll be quick, serving.
Move it quick, yeah. Just say whatever you have to say quickly.
Okay, I'll try and be brief, because we still have our executive session. There were a couple of exciting movements here, as far as redevelopment goes on the agenda tonight, moving forward in Anderson Street and also moving forward in Consonor Plaza. So it's great to see that progress continue. Personally, I was happy to see that we're ready to see some real progress on that traffic light in Beach and Prospect, because it's something we've been talking about for a long time. And Ted, I'm going to ask you, some of the folks that lived in that area had mentioned to me, could we have traffic look into some of the driveways that outlet there and onto Beach and into Prospect in that area? Would it be worthwhile, you know how you see these signs, you know, do not block driveways, you know, so that if the traffic did, you know, encroach on that area, to make sure that people could enter and exit?
Like a "Don't block the grid" type of thing?
All I can say is, we will certainly contact the police department and the Traffic Division, look at this. That signage is advisory only. The only way you can make them enforceable is to get approval for Title 39 and get it approved through a formal. So they wouldn't be enforcement-driven. They'd be more advisory for residents and residents that are driving or visitors.
I mean, hopefully, when most people see those signs, they, you know, they abide by it. So I think it would be a help, so if we could, you know, have traffic take a look at it, and then at least we wouldn't, you know, have folks running into that issue as well. As far as the school meeting, Kathy, we've come up with Ted, how many? Like maybe four sets of dates we were getting together over the summer, and then one or another of the people wound up being on vacation. I haven't taken a summer vacation, so it's not me. But unfortunately, Kathy, that's what's happened. So I think we said it's going to happen in September.
Mid-September.
Mid-September.
Is the latest. And candidly, myself and Jaclyn Stout has been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We're trying to coordinate, and every time when we almost had a tentative meeting, then there became another conflict. So when all the board members from the Board of Education are now present that need to meet, we thought it was just prudent to get these people, the people that are really going to hopefully focus this process, to make sure that they're all present, because...
The ball hasn't been dropped. It was going to be August 15th, and then actually, someone from the board wound up saying, "I'm going on vacation now." Something came up, and we had to cancel that one, but it will happen. No, this is, this is not the, no. This is the preliminary meeting, as we've had in the past, where there'll be two council members, two board members, superintendent of schools, and Mr. Aronberg, our city manager. This is a preliminary meeting to talk about what topics, etc. Eventually, it will culminate in a joint meeting, but we're not anywhere close to that yet. This is another one.
The plan is to have an absolute open dialogue. Once we get a few understandings of what the needs are for both sides, because there's no point in basically having a meeting that doesn't have any structure. So...
We need it to be productive, yes. So that's going to be happening in September. Very, very quickly, I've had some very meaningful meetings and lots of telecons with both the Teterboro Airport, the TANAC organization, and the FAA themselves. And I wanted to do a presentation tonight, but you saw the 18 items on the COW agenda, and Ted said, "No way." So I am going to do it. Ted promises he's going to find time for me at the first September meeting. So I'm going to take the information that I have. I have their presentations. I have them online. I'm going to go through some of it as quickly as I can and give an explanation, because at first look, they're not always that easy to understand. And once I go over it with everyone, I'm going to post that information on the website as well. So those that are interested, please make sure you come to the next COW meeting, and I will be going through that information. In the meantime, as I said, very promising, because we are making progress and not just dropping the ball totally on the flight path. But what can we do in the interim? All right. The one thing I've learned most definitely by attending these meetings is that the squeaky wheel does get the grease. So we have to step up our efforts to be making phone calls. And I'm going to say it now, and I'm going to put it on the website. The noise number for Teterboro Airport is 1-800-225-1071. And the backup number, if you cannot get through that number, is 1-201-288-8828. I'm asking folks, hey, put it on, everyone, you know, has their smartphones. Add it to your contact list. You're out somewhere. You have that number already. You can press that button, and you can make that phone call. I believe they might ask you for your name and address. Other than that, really, you should just have to be notifying them of the time and the location where you are, where you hear that noise. What I've learned is they do track this. They are required to track this. And they do find certain aircraft that get a number of these reports. And some of the aircraft have even been suspended from using the airport privileges because of that. And I think some of the noise that we're experiencing is because some of these planes are flying lower than we would hope they would be flying. So if we can at least start to prevent some of that, I believe that would be something we can do right now, right here today. And as I've asked in the past, take a picture. Again, you have your smartphone. If you're out and about and you see an aircraft close to a building, please take the phone, take the picture, send it to the airport, or just send it to us. Send it to the city manager's office, and we'll make sure that we accumulate this information. These are things we can do right now, today, while we're preparing for the next step. Again, the condo board has been working very feverishly on these efforts as well. They're having their condo board meeting this Thursday. I'm going to attend the meeting, and we're going to hopefully have a good discussion there as well. We appreciate their efforts, because they're bearing a lot of the burden, you know, at the height of some of these buildings, of this noise. So being able to deploy and get folks out making these phone calls, I can't stress how important this is. Again, I wanted to be brief, so have a good night, and thanks for coming.
Dave?
Ms. Davis, the first thing, I made sure that this council looked at Stanley Place, Budan Place, and get those drainages unclogged so that we can see what the problem is. Waiting to hear back from Ted, and hope I hear back from him pretty soon. Next thing, I want to thank NASA for giving the Johnson Library 137 glasses yesterday, so we can look at the eclipse yesterday. It was a great sight. Next Thursday is our last week of Movies Under the Stars, showing the Incredibles. It starts at 7:30. Total Eclipse will be performing Friday, September 1st. They'll be playing R&B pop music. That'll be our last event on Atlantic Street Park. And like Ms. Davis said again, I want to thank Randy Glover, Ms. Geddes, and the whole committee. The first day of school is in 10 days, and we're still taking the collections downstairs in the box for school supplies. Last thing, I don't know how true it is or not, but I spoke with Jack briefly, and I understand that Hackensack Pastry has been sold, and Jack will be playing golf down in Florida with Tiger Woods. And Kathy Salvo, I hate to see you leave, but I want to congratulate you and wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, quickly, I want to, everybody that's watching out there and everybody that's here tonight, make sure you tell your neighbors about the garbage pickup going back to once a week. And it'll go back to the schedule that's on the calendar, right?
Yep.
There, Ted? Because we're not sending out anything. We're doing it through Nixal calls and it'll be on the websites. As Dave mentioned, back to school's coming up in about 10 days. Watch out for the little ones crossing the streets, running around. It's a lot different when, you know, it's a lot different driving in the summer when there's no children running around than during the school year. The Atlantic Street Park was this year, I mean, last year was its first season. This year was just, it just took off. It was incredible, the amount of use it got, the amount of people that attended. I would say there were 400 or 500 people at one event one night. It was literally standing room only. It was a great, great show. Kudos to Randy Glover and his whole crew, his partner Chris. Hackensack, I was proud to be there, hosted the first LGBTQ event ever held in Hackensack. And it was an interesting night. We had a lot of fun. That's a community that was recognized, and we actually had to flag, a rainbow flag up for them when they got there. It was a good moment. We did a Latin night, was mobbed, did a Caribbean night, was busy. Special night was Hometown Hero, was mentioned before. Matt Whitaker was there. If you haven't seen Matthew Whitaker, I suggest you get on YouTube and go and check him out. Incredible young man. Played at the Apollo Theater and won there, and has been on the Ellen DeGeneres Show. He's a great, great talent. September 1st is Total Eclipse. As Dave mentioned, this was a rain out twice now. So hopefully, maybe they should change a name. You know, Eclipse, Rain, I don't know. Yeah, they should have done it last night. If they played last night, it would have been perfect, and it was nice out. But they'll be there Friday, Friday the 1st. I want to thank Kathy for her work with this TANAC stuff going on. It takes, she puts a lot of time into this and a lot of effort, and she's doing it for the citizens of Hackensack. You know, we as people, I would call it airplane noise syndrome. We have it. We hear it. We're used to it. We don't pay attention to it after a while. We just become immune to it. We have to untune ourselves and let it start bothering you again, so you pick up that phone and call that number. All right? Tell your friends and neighbors, because, believe me, she's right. They start getting hundreds of phone calls from here, and guess what town has gone up consistently for the last two years when no other town has really gone up? Hackensack. The noise has gone up in Hackensack two years in a row now. I think it's two years?
The last two quarters.
The last two quarters, and no other municipality's been affected like this city. And it's just insane. I mean, I go home, I lay there at night with the windows open, and you just, you wait for the next one to come after a while. It's like counting sheep, I count planes. So it's disturbing, though. Mr. Serbo has left, so he's going to have to watch this on YouTube. Mercer Street is moving forward, and if you've noticed, the building next door is now gone. The building that was damaged from the construction of the 150-170 project has now been removed, so that project can resume. That just happened this past week. And that allows for the developer of 150-170 for them to move forward, and believe me, we will be on them to do that. I think I answered Ms. Davis's stuff. The trash bag thing, it's pilot program. We see how it goes. Kathy, you know, I don't agree with you 100% on the leaves, because 10 years ago, I had piles of leaves from my house. I never knew when they were picking them up, and you live on our block, too. I mean, and if it's two days away and there's a pile there and it rains, you're still getting leaves in your sewer. So I understand the bagging thing. If it wasn't a problem, the environmental, the Department of Environmental Protection wouldn't be asking us to do it. It's worth a try, because it's easier, definitely keeps the leaves out of going out of the sewer by putting them in bags. Sewer cleaning, we're working on that throughout the city. We have been working on that. And I think that's about it. With that, I want to wish everybody a safe trip home. We still got some more work to do, so good night, everybody. Have a great night. Motion to close, motion to go.
Adjourn this meeting.
I need a, I need motion to adjourn this meeting? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now you need a motion to go into closed session.
I need a motion, go into closed session, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia is absent. Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee, whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist, and whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigations, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality. Do you have anything?
Yeah, we have a number of contractual-related things to talk about. There's also going to be an update on one case, Heck versus Hackensack.
Thank you.